Good evening. We call the meeting of the Edina Planning Commission for July 13th, 2011 to order. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Staunton.
Here.
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 The first item of business is the approval of the meeting agenda. You all have a copy of the meeting agenda. I note that under public hearings on the back page there, item 2011-005.09A subdivision with variances for 5829 Brookview Avenue. That has been continued at the request of the proponent until the 27th, so we will not be hearing that tonight. If anybody is here to speak on that particular issue, you're welcome to stay, but we're not going to be hearing it tonight, so you won't have to comment on it tonight. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the June 29th, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes, Commissioner Staunton? Excuse me.
I've been there. Just, Chair, just one minor word on page 11 of 12, about halfway down the page, there's just an extra word "not," Jackie, so the paragraph that starts with Commissioner Staunton at the end of that sentence, then there looks like there's an extra word in there that just needs to be deleted. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Staunton.
I'm wondering if you can pick up on that because your name was on that one.
Any other questions? Mr. Forrest.
Mr. Forrest?
Commissioner Forrest.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I'll answer it, Chair. On page five, again, this had my name on it, so it had to do with the proximity residential properties. Instead of the north, I was concerned about the properties to the south, specifically the 7500 York Building. And on page 11, about halfway down, regarding recommended square footage pertaining to a change be reduced, felt minor changes could be an issue and should be reviewed. My concern was that we should consider whether or not we would like our city planner to be able to put conditions on any approvals that they make. And I just raised that as an issue, I didn't pull one way or the other, so, thanks.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes and approve the consent agenda?
Some will.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is community comment. As alluded, community comment is to hear comments from the public on any topic that is not on the agenda tonight, or not having been considered in the past 30 days, or which are not slated for future consideration. So, I ask, is there anybody that has any comments in the public comment section? Okay, hearing none. We will move to the next item, which is public hearings. And the first item for public hearing is item B-11-04, a variance requested by College City Design Build and Connie Carino and Jeff Miller, 4509 Garrison Lane, Edina. You just can't stay away from us, can you? Front yard setback variance. Chris?
I don't know. It's just a...
Subject property is located on the south side of Garrison Lane, consisting of a lot of brick and mortar and construction. Property is located on the south side of Garrison Lane. Homeowners are hoping to rebuild on the property, actually, they're in the process of rebuilding on the property. This is a survey of the home that is under construction. The owners began in the 1990s planning the revisions to the property, and at the time, they were faced with some issues regarding front yard setback with their garage, as well as the first floor elevation of their home, or their basement elevation of the home, which ends up raising the first floor elevation beyond the one foot that is allowed. After years of planning, the homeowners were going forward with the plan that would have required two variances, one for the first floor to be elevated higher than the required one foot in order to solve their sewage problem by elevating the basement and the variance from the front yard setback requirement to square off the garage, so both the garage doors could be flush with one another. Unfortunately, as the owners were preparing to bring the plan forward, the Minnesota Supreme Court ruled in June of 2010 on existing variance language that severely limited a city's ability to grant variances from their ordinance requirements. In response to the ruling, the city of Edina put in place a conditional use permit process that allowed first floor elevation that would be in conflict with the state building code, flood elevations, and/or drainage patterns. So, the COP process is adopted to allow projects such as the applicants to go forward at the time that variances were literally put on hold. The state legislature has now adopted new language that permits the processing of variances, so the homeowners may now go forward with their original plan. They originally had planned to have both of these issues addressed, the front yard setback variance for the corner of the garage, and then also the first floor elevation. The property owners Connie Carino and Jeffrey Miller are hoping to add three feet onto the front of their westerly garage stall. Here is a view of the front elevation of the house, and what you see is that it looks like the garage stalls are flush, however, in looking at the floor plan of it, you will notice that the garage door, the westerly garage door is recessed three feet in from the easterly garage door in order to address the front yard setback. What the variance is request is to add approximately 10 square feet into the front yard setback area to bring that garage door forward in order to be flush with the easterly garage door. The primary issues are, is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 single dwelling unit zoning district, and is consistent with the wall line of the easterly garage door. The three-foot extension of the garage is appropriate in size and scale for the home and neighborhood. The new improvements will be difficult to distinguish as changes to the building plan. The opportunity to expand into the rear yard is limited, given that there is a 50-foot setback required from the Garrison Pond. The footprint is limited, given the expansion may not occur also any closer to the front lot line that is at an angle. The home would maintain the character of the neighborhood and would have little of any impact on the streetscape. The question is, is the proposed variance justified? Minnesota statutes and Edina ordinances require that the following conditions must be satisfied affirmatively. Will the variance relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance? Staff believes that the proposed variance is reasonable. The proposed improvements will be accommodated within the existing planned roof area. The front elevation literally won't change, with the exception of bringing that garage door forward. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property, and that are not self-created? The unique circumstances are the combination of the angled front yard setback, the deeper required rear yard setback from the water body, and the variances for a small 10-square-foot triangular-shaped piece of the garage that would overlap the setback. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, the proposed improvements would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The improvements were specifically designed to blend with the surrounding homes. The goal was not to introduce a large, over-scaled structure into the neighborhood. The garage door adjustment will not alter the view from the street. Staff recommends approval be based on the following findings: that with the exception of the variance request, the proposal will meet the required standards and ordinances for the R1 single dwelling unit district. The proposal would meet the required standards for a variance because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as it will allow a slight increase in the westerly garage stall depth to match the easterly garage stall. The encroachment is a small triangular overlap of the setback that consists approximately 10 square feet. The intent of the ordinance is to maintain adequate spacing from the street. The small overlap will not compromise the streetscape. The unique circumstances are the angle of the front lot line, given the orientation of the homes on the block to the street, and the setback required from the water body behind the home. At the time when the previous home was constructed, the setback from the water body was 25 feet. Approval of the variance should be subjected to the following conditions: that the site must be developed and maintained in substantial conformance with the following plans; the survey date stamped June 17th, 2011; and building elevation date stamped June 23rd, 2011. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions that you may have.
Chris, so I understand the roof line and everything else comes out, it's not adjusted for where that second garage stall is, it's only that, under the current ordinance, the garage door itself would have to be recessed, is that correct?
That's correct, and you can see that on the floor plan here. This is where the garage stall depth would start, the garage door opening here, they would just simply bring it out to be flush with that easterly garage stall. The problem with the garage stall is that it would be, from the front face of it to the back, it's 18 feet in depth, which is pretty shallow for a garage stall. And they also have a stair going up, which reduces that to 15 feet.
Other questions of the commission, of staff? Thank you, Chris. Do the proponents wish to address the commission? Or the applicants, I guess?
Yes, you're right, Commissioner Grab, we couldn't stay away, we had to come back, so, I guess several things to note. With the shorter garage stall, as Chris mentioned, is 18 feet. By the time you take off three feet for the step, we're down about 15. Most cars nowadays are 16, 17 feet long, so it becomes kind of an obstacle to be able to walk around the car. And also, as Chris mentioned, there will be no changes to the roof line, there's no changes to the wall. It's basically just moving the door, the garage door, within the framework that's there, three feet forward. So, there won't be any change in line of sight, any change physically for the building at all, other than the fact that the front door will be, or the garage door will be moved three feet further, and giving us, again, 21 feet in both stalls, which, not an overly large garage, but certainly large enough for our needs at this point.
Again, Bjorn Freud and College City Design Build. We just kindly request that if at all possible, we wouldn't have to build a garage that's 18 feet, interior dimensions, if at all possible, so that we can get a decent-sized, common-sense garage. Roof lines are there, walls are there, and we'd like to do the right thing. Thank you.
Questions of the applicants? Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else care to comment on this variance request? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll take a motion to close the hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's, are there comments or concerns or discussion by the members of the commission? Yes?
Chair Grab, I think it's a very...
Commissioner Fisher, I'm having trouble tonight.
I think it's a very reasonable request, and had they not, I'm just assuming that had they not gone through the process we went through where variances weren't a vehicle that they could use, this would have been dealt with in the first round, or maybe the second or third round. I can't remember how many rounds there have been, there have been so many, but I think it's reasonable.
Okay. Other comments? Is there a motion? Commissioner Carpenter?
It's been moved that the application be approved, subject to the findings and the conditions in the report, the staff report.
It's been moved that the application be approved, subject to the findings and the conditions in the report of staff. Is there a second to that motion? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your request for variance has been approved. See, it is an easy process, isn't it? Told you you should have done it. There is a two-week waiting period while there can be an appeal, so you might want to wait before you move that garage door out until that appeal process is done. Otherwise, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
The next item of business is, the next item of business is item number 2010-001.11A, Amendment to Approved Plan and Preliminary and Final Plat, The Water Senior Living of Edina, 6200 Colonial Way. And while Chris is coming to the podium, let me just say a couple of things. We have received numerous emails and comments from the public concerning this matter. I know there are several people who will want to address this issue. I did have an indication earlier that there might be someone in the audience who is representing a group of people. If that is the case, I will allow that representative to speak on behalf of those individuals, but I would think it not appropriate for then those individuals to additionally comment. But, if somebody wants to represent five people, and then six or seven other people want to comment, that's perfectly fine. We will accommodate public discussion. I do want to make one additional comment with respect to some of the materials that we've received in the mail. One email that was addressed to the city says, "I remain in the position that the city of Edina, its elected officials and the Colonial Church are guilty of greed in not representing the views, needs, and wants of its taxpaying citizens." I reject that comment. It's inappropriate to accuse members of the commission, or members of the city council, or anybody on the staff who are not compensated in any form whatsoever concerning this project. We're not guilty of greed. The only thing we're guilty of is trying to do the best thing for all of the citizens of the city of Edina. So, I reject that comment. It's inappropriate, and, you know, if that individual is here tonight and wishes to retract it, I'll be glad to hear a retraction, but, you know, I just, the people on the commission, the people on the city council, and the people on the staff do what they do diligently and with the best interests of the city at heart. Sometimes decisions don't appeal, don't, people don't agree with all the decisions, but the decisions are made based on the facts and on the law, and not based on some other factors such as greed, so, enough said on that. With that, I'll turn the podium over to Chris and hear the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. See, The Water Senior Living in Edina, on behalf of the Colonial Church of Edina, is requesting an amendment to the approved site plan and a preliminary and final plat for a 139-unit, three-story, senior convalescent home at 6200 Colonial Way. In an effort to create seven affordable housing units within the approved development project, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the building size by 28 feet. Specifically, 28 feet will be taken out of the middle of the building, and as you can see, the approved plan is on top with an elevation of the revised plan. It indicates that 28 feet would be taken out of the middle of the building, so the entire building would be shortened. The site plan remains generally the same. This is the approved site plan, showing what had originally been approved. The new site plan, you can see the old building in red that is slightly larger, and then the yellow area is the proposed modification. To accommodate the reduction in building size, the only other change to the site itself would be an elimination of one parking stall on the site. To accommodate the reduction in the building size, 36 underground parking stalls would be eliminated on the first floor. There would be a reduction in the width of the two-story entry, reductions in space for offices, a reduction in the cafe, living room, and one of the wellness rooms. On the second floor, there would be a reduction in private dining area, a reduction in the parlor, a reduction in airspace for the two-story entry, and a shift in the dining area. On the third floor, a gathering room would be eliminated. There would be no changes to the number or size of the dwelling units. Here again is the approved elevation and proposed with the modifications. This would be the front elevation, and you can see the original design wider in the middle, and now the proposed design, front elevation, and then also the rear elevation with the original design, much wider middle portion of the building, and now that's been reduced. The applicant is also requesting a subdivision of the property to create a new lot in which the building will be located. The preliminary plat was approved when the project was approved in 2010, however, final plat was never obtained, and the preliminary approval has expired. The final plat would have been, would needed to have been approved within a year. The proposed preliminary plat is exactly the same as the previously approved preliminary plat, and then the final plat that they're requesting as well. The revised plan would still provide enough parking for the project based on city code requirements for parking for a convalescent home. The required parking is one space for every four patients or residents based on a maximum capacity of the building, plus one space per employee on a major shift, plus one space per vehicle owned by the building's management. Based on 169 resident maximum, 30 employees, one vehicle, and one bus, 74 spaces are required for the project. The site plan shows that there will be 72 surface stalls and 54 enclosed stalls for a total of 126. Despite the loss of surface stalls, the 36 underground parking stalls, the project would still far exceed the city's parking requirement. It would be in excess of the requirement by 52 stalls. It has been staff's experience with similar uses within the city of Edina, such as Park Plaza and Vernon Terrace, that the underground parking areas are not fully used by residents. Over time, residents do not have a need for the cars, and oftentimes, these stalls, interior stalls, become storage areas for boats and cars for family members that do not reside in the building. The applicant has demonstrated that enough parking would be provided for both the Colonial Church and the senior convalescent home. For the church, the required parking spaces must be one-third of the maximum seating capacity of the largest place of assembly. The maximum capacity for the sanctuary of the church is 857 people. Therefore, 286 spaces are required. The entire site demonstrates parking availability of 341 parking spaces, which is in excess of its 55 spaces over the requirement. Site circulation would remain the same. As the approved plan, access to the site would be from the two entrances, access from Colonial Way. There would be surface parking in front of the building, with a loading area behind the building facing Crossdown Highway. A circular pickup and drop-off area would be located in front of the building. Access to the underground garage would be from the front of the building to the west side. The proposal would meet all minimum drive aisle width standards. Preliminary and final plat is being requested of the lot to create a separate lot for the convalescent home. The subdivision would meet all the minimum lot standards and subdivision requirements. There is a parkland dedication requirement per the Minnesota State statute and city code. The applicant is required to dedicate land for public use or parks, per Section 81013, subdivision 5 of the city code. Cash fee for subdivision of land of $5,000 per dwelling unit to satisfy the city's park dedication requirement is required. The city may also require land dedication if necessary. The total park dedication cost would be $695,000 with no land dedicated. The fee would be required prior to the release of the final plat miler. Primary issue is the proposed amendment to the site plan and plat reasonable for the site. The proposed use is a reasonable use for three reasons. The proposed plans are consistent with the approved site plan for the site. This building is simply reduced in size. The look, style remains the same. The landscaping, circulation, access, and number of units all stay the same. The parking requirement would still be met. The revised site plan includes the provisions of seven affordable housing units. This would help the city to achieve its established goal with the Metropolitan Council of approving 212 additional affordable units by the year 2030. If the site plan were denied, the city would lose the affordable housing units, and a large building would be constructed. 28 feet provide seven units of affordable housing. Approval is subject to the following findings: if proposed plans are consistently approved, are planned for the development. The building will be smaller in size. The number of parking stalls would still exceed the city code requirements by 52 stalls. The applicant would provide seven units of affordable housing, which would go towards meeting the city's established goals with the Metropolitan Council. Approval is subject to the following conditions: unless modified by the conditions stated, the project must still meet the conditions required for the original site plan and rezoning approval for the site. The site must be developed in conformance with the following plans: site plan date stamped May 12, 2011; building elevation date stamped May 12, 2011. The project shall include seven units of affordable housing, as determined by the Metropolitan Council. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the preliminary and final plat to create a new lot for the approved 139-unit convalescent home. The approval is subject to the following findings: that the proposed plat meets all zoning and subdivision requirements. Approval is subject to the following conditions: the final plat must be filed within one year of the city council approval, and the parkland dedication fee of $695,000 shall be paid prior to release of the milers approving the final plat. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Questions of staff by the commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
Chris, with respect to the parking situation as it's changing right now, and recognizing, I think there was some information in the material that spoke to, and you mentioned as well, the concept that people tend to put boats and other recreational-type stuff down in some of these underground parking areas. Is there any control against the above-ground parking areas not performing that same function?
We haven't experienced a problem with that. I mean, generally, the property owners are not allowing that sort of thing. I mean, we really haven't seen that. It's the indoor storage that's attractive.
Okay. And if the indoor storage were fully occupied with, with, with parked vehicles, then is at least possible that the, that the above-ground spaces could be used for that purpose?
Sure. It, for, by ordinance, it certainly could be, but if there were some, you know, private restrictions by the owner, perhaps not.
Okay.
Other questions of staff by the commission? All right. Thank you very much, Chris. Would the applicant care to make a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Jay Jensen. I'm with the Water Senior Living, 1600 North Crossroad. Thank you for seeing us again. We're in front of you with two specific requests that were highlighted in the staff report. First, our request is for a site plan amendment to shrink the building to incorporate affordable housing. And second, the preliminary and final plat. And as you know, the, the zoning has already been previously approved, and we're asking for no changes on that. The reason we're working on creating the affordable housing through the site plan modification is, as you might recall, when we were here first time, our plan always had affordable housing in it. It had 20%, 28 units, like we did in Eden Prairie, like we did in Minneapolis. And our plan was to try to do that through the use of tax increment financing. The tax increment financing wasn't approved. So we went back and tried to figure out a way, how can we create some affordable units that don't cost the city a penny? And the only way we could figure out to do that was to literally shrink the building. And we realized this would, you know, be a, potentially another process, but we really believe in affordable housing. And we do that in all of our projects. We did it in Little Falls. We did it in Princeton. Did it in Minneapolis. Did it in Eden Prairie. We did it in Woodbury. So we just really believe in that, and Colonial Church is our partner, also believes in it. And we think this is a way, it's a win-win. It helps the city achieve some of your goals and helps us further our mission. The building size and the change in the building is, is very, very minor. If you look at the, at the renderings next to each other, it's hard to tell the difference unless you focus right in on the middle where we took that 28 feet out right in the middle. Otherwise, even when I look at them, sometimes I mix them up. The parking impact, we still exceed the parking requirement by 70%. And we would commit to you, we won't allow boat storage to be outside or any appropriate, inappropriate storage to be outside. The boat storage really occurs by family members of the people who live there who see an empty garage and ask can they park boats, snowmobiles, older cars there? And I think if you go to Vernon Terrace, if you go to our property at the Colony at Eden Prairie, in the wintertime, we have more boats than we have resident cars. And that's 75 parking stalls underneath. And the other thing to keep in mind is our average age is about 79. And what we find is about 20% of the assisted living residents have cars. And in Eden Prairie, that's about 20 people, and about half those cars move. So it, it, it's, it's not used very often. So in our opinion, there's really going to be about 50 spaces needed for the employees and for the, the residents, and the balance on the, on the, on the surface is really guest parking. So we believe we have an excess of parking, and parking will never be a problem. Second thing that's come up in some of the correspondence that you've received is relates to licensing. And in all of our assisted living facilities in the state, we get two licenses from the Department of Health at State. The first one is Housing with Services license, which really focuses on the building. And the second one is a Class F license, which we get for the services that are provided to the building. We've done this as recently as two months ago. We got those same two licenses for the building. We're just open in Minneapolis in the last two weeks. In the last six months, we've got it in Little Falls and Princeton. So we've done this exact same process in three other facilities in Minnesota that are all freestanding assisted living buildings. And that's the way the state works with assisted living buildings. The creation of this affordable housing also has broad community support. It's not just us. It's not just Colonial Church, but you may have also received letters of support from Normandale Lutheran Church, Our Lady of Grace, Christ Presbyterian, Edina Community Lutheran, among the churches who have come to support in trying to create some affordable housing. So we support the staff report and their recommendations and their conditions. We thank you for your consideration of this. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Questions for Mr. Jensen? Commissioner Carpenter?
Mr. Jensen, with respect to the licensing issues that, that obviously have been raised and you're responding to, can you talk a little bit about what the timing is in terms of how the, when those licenses are obtained?
We, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we usually apply for those well into the construction process. You need those before you can open and operate. So if you don't have those two licenses, the Class F license generally keeps running with the operation like they, all of us principals are investig, you know, investigated by the state in our background checks. So they kind of keep it up to date, and, and in that we're rel, we're pretty active in the state, we keep those licenses active. But specifically for a site for the, for the Housing with Services license, we would apply for that as the project's about halfway under construction. We give the Department of Health heads up that we're building it, and, you know, they, we know what requirements they have. Our architects know that, so that it's a pretty smooth process.
When they, when they look at that, from a licensing perspective, what are they actually looking for? Do they, do they work off the, the design plans?
They work off the plans, and then they actually do a physical inspection when it's completed. They look at the kitchen, how's the kitchen laid out? Is the flooring appropriate? Sanitation appropriate? Do you have all your safety, your access issues, your fire, health, safety issues? So they go through a pretty thorough inspection.
Mr. Jensen, can you elaborate a little bit on the, the nature of the residents you anticipate having, conditions they may be experiencing, et cetera? What's the population like that you're serving?
The, you know, let me talk in, in different groups, because not everybody's the same, because we all age differently. The...
Some of us have trouble with names when we age.
And some of us gray a little early. I used to mine the gray hair until it started falling out. There, there's a group that comes in under assisted living who initially just need the, the meals and the housekeeping and the wellness checks and being involved in the wellness programs and the activity programs, and very little services. So those are kind of assisted living-like residents. And, and there's always a proportion, and it changes over time, up and down. But there's, you know, in, in any given time, there's between a third and two-thirds of a building with people like that. Then there are people who need more services, whether it's medication management, helping getting dressed, bathed, those kinds of things, who are more intensive assisted living. So that's kind of the more intensive assisted living. Then there's, we have, here are two memory support neighborhoods, 14 units each. And there it'll be people, you know, come in. The demand for memory support in Edina is very high. The recent opening of Ebenezer's Project, they fill their memory support within a month. And they're 70% full in two months. So there, there's a, the memory support, there's a significant demand there, and that's a, you know, obviously a different kind of clientele. And, and that varies in needs of people who need different levels of memory support. And then our last type of unit are care suites, which is the heaviest need assisted living. That usually fills last, and oftentimes it's people who move in and, and they realize over time they need more extensive services. The average age, when you blend it all together, works out to be about 87. And it, and it doesn't matter the condition, because you could be 87 and assisted living light, or 87 and care suites.
So would you describe any of the people, well, in those three categories as having mental or physical disorders?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the, the people in the memory care unit, you know, won't be driving cars. You know, they'll, they'll, they're in a lock unit. And, you know, there's always 24 hours a day, seven days a week nursing help there for those 14 people. So that, they would have some. The other people in the assisted living, it varies.
So some might have mental or physical disorders, but not all?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Forrest?
I'm a little bit confused, because when, the first time we heard you, it sounded like there were, there was going to be more intensive levels of care at the facility than what we heard subsequently. And do you anticipate having, when you talk about care suites, how much of that do you anticipate having on that, this location?
14 units.
14 units? And I'm just wondering, because it's not licensed as a care facility, but as a Housing with Services facility, do you, does your company provide the, the care, or is it contracted from the outside?
We provide the care. We have our own, nurses are our employees.
Okay. And, but it's, then technically, under the Housing with Services, then it's considered home care?
Yes.
It's not considered nursing home care?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Shear.
Commissioner Shear.
I want to be sure I understand the, the parking situation.
I knew that.
So if you can bear with my math for a minute. We're proposing 126 parking stalls. If I subtract the one-to-one ratio for employees, the vehicle, and the bus, that's 33, or 32, pardon me, then I end up with, if my math is correct, 94 spaces remaining that could be allocated to residents of the building. 54 of those are outside.
Correct.
Is that correct?
About, yes.
Okay. And, and what is your estimate? I mean, if I were a resident and I did maintain a car, I don't think I'd want to park mine outside, especially if, if I were either in Florida for the winter, or if I were even here all winter and I was going to be accessing it to get out of the lot. So what is your estimate of how many out of the 169 maximum residents that the facility would house will have vehicles?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, i- if you take, look at just the assisted living, because the care suites and the memory support people will not have cars.
Right.
So that leaves about 96 units. And our experience is about 20% of those people have a car, whether it's driven or not.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, brings you to about 20. So from a, a historic and from our experience standpoint, we think there'd be, you know, at maximum 30 employee spaces and about 20 resident spaces, for a total of a little over 50.
And this is in your experience, even in a building that, that as you're describing it, really is going to be, I think, a very lovely building? Larger spaces, a lot of amenities? A, a building that would attract people that want that sort of a unit? They won't have cars?
Correct, because the average age is 87. So, you know, you start thinking of the relatives that we have who are 87 and driving, you know, and, and how many drive and how many don't drive. It's, it's, I mean, that's, we, we add extra parking, just, you know, you never know for sure. But our experience is about, it's about 20%.
Okay. My 98-year-old father was unusual, but he maintained a car even when he didn't drive, because he wanted others to have access to his vehicle.
And that's why, that's our experience too, that about half the cars are, are driven by the resident, and about half of them are just parked there for that purpose.
For that purpose. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Mr. Jensen, I just either misheard you or misunderstanding something. Earlier, I wrote down average age 79, and you just said 87.
I'm sorry, it's 87. I, I misspoke earlier. It's 87.
For the whole building?
For the whole building.
Everyone combined?
Correct.
What would, what would be the average age of the, if you take out memory care, you know, you're sort of the lowest-tier care, those people, what, do you have any...
87. I mean, it's, if you go through assisted livings, people all age at different rates, and some people are extraordinarily healthy at 95, and some people are in care suites at 75. And you just don't know.
It's a concern, because I know 79-year-olds are into drag racing.
Right.
So, okay.
Commissioner Forrest?
Just tell me, because it just seems counterintuitive to me. How do you, I mean, if you're making the building smaller, how does this affect the ability to have affordable housing units in the building? I mean, because it seems like, okay, you're making it smaller, you're getting rid of units, and now you're going to have some at a lower price.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we're not getting rid of any units. What we're doing is we're shrinking the common areas, as the staff report described. And by shrinking the common areas, we're shrinking our mortgage. We're shrinking our debt service amount, so we're able to lower the rents on seven affordable
Commissioner Staunton?
Sorry to belabor this, Mr. Jensen, but I'm just trying to figure out the breakdown here. You have care suites, memory support, and then what you call assisted...
Assisted living.
Living? And, and there's 14 memory support, is that right?
28 memory support.
28 memory support.
14 care suites. And on my...
97.
97 assisted living units.
So assisted living. And, and with the assisted living, and so, just so I'm clear on it, assisted living is like the least amount of services in those three?
Correct, but, but it can vary. I mean, it, assisted living light versus assisted living...
Right. It's going to be tailored to the needs of the particular...
Tailored to the individual's needs.
Okay. But, but that tends on the spectrum, that is the lightest...
Compared to the other two, it's less.
Okay. And then the other two, memory support, I assume is the most intensive or non-est...
Care suites are the most intensive.
Care suites are the most intensive. Would that, so that might include somebody who has physical as well as...
Correct.
...as mental disorders or issues.
And the staffing is significantly higher at care suites than memory support, and memory support's higher than assisted living.
Okay. Thank you.
If I might follow up on what you said earlier about, you shrunk the, you shrunk the common areas and the, well, you shrunk the common areas. Is that one of the things that's regulated in these type of facilities, the kinds of common areas that you have?
Mr. Chairman, not really, other than the, the kitchen and dining. They look at that pretty close, but there really aren't prescriptive requirements for wellness. I mean, like, we have, we'll have a large wellness area, and there really aren't requirements for that specifically. It's really focused on the, the health, life, safety items, and then the kitchen and dining primarily. I mean, we do all our buildings incorporate wellness and bistros and living, you know, community living rooms and those kinds of things, like we did at the Colony at Eden Prairie. And most do in, in Minnesota.
Mr. Stupanik?
I have a question about the shrinking of the common areas. Would you be shrinking the rooms at all? Just like a little bit? Or no?
Well, you mean that the, or the, the people, where people live?
Yes.
We didn't touch those at all.
Okay. So it's the same.
No, they're all identical.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Jensen by the commission?
Thank you.
Oh, one more, Commissioner.
Just looking at the line drawings, it looks like, did you change your window design?
A little bit in the front, to make it a little more residential feel than, because as we shrunk it, it just, it, the previous design didn't look as well when you took out that, those sections in the middle, so we changed it a little bit.
Okay. It looked like there were all these vertical lines in the original drawing.
Right.
These were different. Okay.
Other questions of Mr. Jensen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. We're now going to hear comments or testimony from the public in the room. Again, I would ask if you are representing a group of residents, a group has selected one person to speak for them, please so identify yourself. Otherwise, we will proceed with the, with the taking of testimony. I, what I intend to do with this is we will have testimony by individuals who are not in favor of the change, and then I would hear from somebody who is in favor of the change, and then someone who's not in favor of the change, and someone who is in favor of the change. If, if nobody else wants to speak in favor of it, or nobody else wants to speak against it, then we'll just go on down and, and hear the next speaker. But we do want to have some order to this, and so it becomes a legitimate, or not a legitimate, but it becomes a reasonable conversation. doesn't gain worth by the fact that it's repeated seven times. I mean, if it's a good comment, it's a good comment the first time, and, uh, it's not necessarily required to, uh, repeat the comment. Uh, that being said, we do want to hear, uh, all of the points of view, so, uh, I just ask that everybody be respectful of everyone's time, and, uh, we will proceed with the hearing. Who would like to speak?
I'm, uh, Susan Clark, and I'm supposed to introduce the subject of our opposition and why we oppose it.
Okay.
So, um, I'm speaking for the whole group, but I-
Okay, is, is it Clark?
Yes, Clark.
What's your, what's your address, ma'am?
Um, fifty-eight twelve West Sixty-first Street.
Okay.
And so, um, I'm supposed to speak to the broader issues and things like that. Um, I have a handout that I would like to use during my presentation, so, um, can someone show me how to do that, or?
You mean, you want to pre-show something?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll refer to that in, in the presentation.
Okay. Ms. Clark, as, as you are, uh, more or less representing, apparently by some agreement of the people in the room, you're making a, an introduction to this. I'll give you a little bit of leeway on the time, but-
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'm, as I said, I was, I'm speaking in opposition to the Waters Project request for preliminary and final pla- and subdivision approval and their change request application to the approved development application of July tw- two thousand and ten. Um, the neighborhood had worked long and hard to vet this development application back in two thousand and ten because of the many concerns, including the big concern around parking. Many of you probably remember the public comments and the, that were provided in the five-hour hearing, um, in June thirtieth of two thousand and ten. Um, the preliminary plat subdivision approval for the Waters Project was provided by the City Council at the February seventeenth, two thousand and ten City Council meeting. This preliminary plat and subdivision approval was in effect for one year from the state when it expired in February two thousand and eleven. Shelter Corporation allowed the plat subdivision application to lapse. On May tenth, two thousand and eleven, Shelter Corporation requested a change to the Waters Development Application of July seventeenth, two thousand and ten. They're requesting a reduction of thirty-nine spaces, um, and then they are, a reduction in common space by twenty-eight square feet on each level to fund seven affordable housing units. As of June ninth, two thousand and eleven, the Shelter Corporation filed second plat subdivision application for which they were requesting a preliminary and final approval at today's Planning Commission meeting. I would like to point out that this thirty million development project has been materially misclassified in the zoning process. It's classified as a PRD five, a convalescent nursing home that requires a valid license from the state of Minnesota. Other assisted living facilities in Edina are PRD, or PSR four. The Waters will be registered housing, that is assisted living with services. Why is the Waters considering this project a PRD five? Maybe it's parking, we don't know. Maybe it's something else. The state of Minnesota does have a requirement for registered housing with services in Minnesota. To be registered as housing with services, eighty percent of the residents have to be fifty-five or over, meaning that twenty percent could be less than fifty-five. The state does not regulate assisted living facilities. We are concerned there's nothing in the state's language nor in Edina's zoning ordinances that would suggest the Waters would be required to so operate this perpetually. And, um, I'm gonna walk through a calculation of how, how many people can actually live there. Um, so, the Waters, um, here, they've got one bedroom units, sixty-seven of them, and they're eight hundred to fourteen hundred square feet. And they've got two bedroom units, thirty units, to twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square feet. Memory and care units, forty-two units. Now, we have checked with the, um, Edina Department of Health, and they said, you know, one occupant requires a minimum of a hundred and fifty square feet, and there must be at least a hundred square feet for each additional occupant. The number of occupants can't be based on the number of bedrooms in, in the place. So, if you assume one bedroom with at least two hundred and fifty square feet could house two people, a two-bedroom with at least three hundred and fifty could house three, then you get into this calculation here, and we've made some assumptions about who, how many spouses are living together, that kind of thing. But if we split the first, the sixty-seven, we split it between thirty-seven and thirty, you get to this number, a hundred and seven people. If you split the second two-bedroom units, and you just assume that they have a third person living there, then you get to this number, and we assume that the memory and care units would all be single occupancy. And so you end up with the two hundred and nine residents. Now, the city has claimed that there will be a hundred and sixty-nine, but legally, they could have more than that. So, um, Jay Jensen also reported in two thousand and ten that the Waters senior living had exceeded parking requirements for PR, PDR five by forty percent, including the thirty-nine spaces he's taking away. The project approved last July actually was with those spaces. Now the Waters wants to take the parking spaces away. You know, is this fair and reasonable? Uh, we don't think so. The developer, Shelter Corporation and the city say that a maximum of a hundred and sixty-nine people would live at the Waters, meaning twenty percent or thirty-three of the residents can be under fifty-five. The city was informed in early two thousand and ten that twenty percent of the people at the Colony in Eden Prairie are still working. Parking requirements for senior citizens, housing requires point-five car stalls per senior. The requirement for non-seigneurs is more stalls per apartment unit. If the Water has non-seigneurs living there, should the parking requirement be one-point-seven-five stalls, one-point-five, one-point-two-five? To the, you know, that's where we get into parking issues. The zoning misclassification has legal risk for the city and Edina residents as the building use and to the required, required parking. There are many questions to be answered about the parking change and the parking requirements as this is a result of the error in the zoning application last year. Until the proper zoning classification is applied and the parking requirements are determined based on the actual use, we will requestfully, respectfully request that you vote no to the plat subdivision application and the development application change request. And I entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, did someone raise your hand?
It just went over, yeah.
Ms. Clark, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. I wrote it down even, so. Questions of Ms. Clark? Thank you, Ms. Clark. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the proposal? Please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
Robert Scroggins, six-two-five-six, Sandpiper Court. That's, uh, Nine Mile Village, the townhouse development immediately west of its development. I talked to you a year ago in favor of this, uh, proposal because, uh, this land is not gonna be empty forever, and, uh, the existing zoning at that, that time could allow a much more intense development of single-family housing that would have been worse than what, uh, the Countryside Neighborhood Group objects to now. The, the point is now, uh, that you approved it at that time, the council approved it, and they've, now you have a proposal that is an improvement over that, in that it's less intense, less dense, and it provides affordable units. The, you just approved, uh, another variance based on the staff recommendation that it was the reasonable thing to do. Again, this is the reasonable thing to do. If reasonableness cannot prevail in Edina, I don't know where it would prevail.
Thank you, Mr. Scroggins. Someone who would like to speak against the proposal?
Cameron Gable, a member of the commission. Attorney Knutson, Planner Chris Hocker. I'm Gordon Johnson, fifty-eight thirty-seven, Jeff Place in Edina. Ms. Clark did comment on some of the things in the handout that I have provided that I would like to have added to the record. I want to summarize a couple of them, and I'm pretty much sticking to what I believe are the legal issues before us. I know what was approved before. I still believe it was erroneously approved. Mr. Jensen, on several occasions, has said this is a registered facility. He is claiming tonight it is a licensed facility. I don't believe that it is, because it's simply assisted living for services, requires only a registration. I do not believe that PRD five was appropriate a year ago. I don't believe it's appropriate now, because this facility is clearly not a rest home, convalescent home, or a nursing home. And if you take a look at ordinance eight fifty point one-three, there is no ambiguity in that ordinance. It specifically says this covers only nursing homes, convalescent homes, and rest homes, all of which require a license from the state of Minnesota. Let's assume for a moment that they could qualify under PRD five and requested a license to build the facility under the title of a convalescent home, nursing home, or rest home. Section one forty-four of the state statutes at the moment prohibits granting building permits for facilities that fit within that description, so I don't think they make it. Unfortunately, I don't think the Waters qualifies under the PSR ordinance sections that we have, because their units are all too large. If you go back in the history of Edina over the last few years and check some of the facilities that have been approved as PSRs, you'll find that technically I don't think they qualify either, because they exceeded the five hundred to eight hundred and fifty square foot per unit size. And in my handout, I've mentioned three or four of them that clearly have come under that description. In my opinion, we can't take a proposed development and stick it under any ordinance the city might have, no matter whether the project is a good project or a bad project. I think we, as citizens, have the right to rely on the published and approved ordinances that the city has adopted, and I believe the city has an obligation to properly place all of its development under the proper ordinances. It's my request that the city of Edina either permit the Waters Senior Living to withdraw its amendment, as well as the original development plan and subdivision, or we table the measure until such time as the city of Edina adopts an assisted living ordinance, which it currently doesn't have, to permit these various facilities to be properly classified. And on the top of page two, I've listed a number of them which appear to be unqualified to fit PSR zoning. And the PUD that we have started to look at in this city isn't, isn't, in my opinion, going to work, because we're dealing with R-one property over there. In my opinion, the developer should not be put in a position to be zoned for something that it is not, and indirectly be involved in causing undue risk to a neighborhood and to the city through inappropriate zoning. Before a development of this size and magnitude should go forward, the city, the developer, and all neighborhoods, not just the countryside neighborhood, should know what density, building height, floor area, setbacks, parking, et cetera, would be permitted under the ordinance that should be put into place before we go any further approving anything in this city. Right tonight, we know nothing about a proposed assisted living ordinance. We've made a mess out of the differences between PRD five and PSR and some of the others. So I think we ought to stop, take a hard look at it, put the proper ordinance in place, and then come back and do what the city ought to be doing, which is developing a fine community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Somebody like to speak in favor of the project? Someone else like to follow Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. My name's Kent Gravell, fifty-six oh-nine, Tracy Avenue.
How do you, say, is it Gravell?
Gravell. G-R-A-V-E-L-L-E.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to draw the council, or the commission's attention to ordinance eight ten point one-one, which states that the commission, in reviewing proposed plats and subdivisions, and in determining its recommendation to the council, quote, "may consider, among other matters, the following. A, the impact of the proposed plat or subdivision and proposed development on the character and symmetry of the neighborhood." I've done some research on this ordinance, and as far as I can tell, there's only been three instances where it's even cited in the last few years, at least according to the city website. And one is in two thousand and four, when the Indian Hills owner, um, attempted to change his, um, single-family property into a duplex of sorts, and the mayor struck it down, stating that it didn't fit the character and symmetry of the neighborhood according to eight ten point one-one. Well, in our case, we're having a, um, over a hundred units in a building surrounded by residential, uh, homeowners, and there is no, um, similar facility within at least a mile or two. Vernon Terrace is probably the closest. I'd also like to draw your attention to A two, which states the capability of the size, shape, location, and arrangement of the lots in the proposed plat or subdivision with proposed density and intended use of the site, and the density of use of lots in the neighborhood. Again, the density of this, uh, proposed project is much greater than anything, uh, within at least a mile or two. Uh, in point B, it states the susceptibility of the site to flooding. Uh, we've hired a hydrologist, a former DNR employee. Um, he has stated before the, uh, Nine Mile Creek Watershed District that, uh, a significant portion of the proposed site's, uh, parking lot will be underwater in a hundred-year flood. Um, there is debate as to the amount of water, um, but there is no debate that it will be underwater, uh, in a hundred-year flood. Under point G, the relationship of lots in the proposed plat or subdivision to existing streets and the adequacy and safety of ingress to and egress from such lots from and to existing streets. As some of you may know, uh, when you exit on sixty-two onto Tracy, it's very dangerous. There is debate as to the amount of water, but there is no debate that it will be underwater in a 100-year flood. Under Point G, the relationship of lots in the proposed plat or subdivision to existing streets and the adequacy and safety of ingress to and egress from such lots from and to existing streets. As some of you may know, when you exit on 62 onto Tracy, it's very dangerous, particularly during rush hour. If people are exiting from this living Waters complex onto Tracy, particularly if they want to make a left turn, it will be extremely dangerous. If they want to make a right turn, then it will make it more difficult for the people exiting trying to get north on Tracy from 62. So that's another point that I think is a problem. And finally, if you look at it states that the commission should look at any potential disturbance of slopes with a grade of 18% or more. Over a year ago, I did walk the site with our hydrologist, and there is a significant incline heading up to 62. And I think if any of you walked the site in the forest, not just on the parking lot, I think you would probably agree that the grade is more than 18%. So for all of these reasons, I really do believe that you should disapprove of any plat or subdivision and recommend the council to disapprove the plat or subdivision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gravell. Somebody else care to speak?
I'm Jan Johnson, reside at 5837 Jeff Place, Edina. Professionally, I'm a consulting dietitian. I have worked in assisted living and senior housing for the last 40 years, so I am very, very familiar with the assisted living issue. I guess I would like to mention and discuss a little bit about the parking situation. I know they've had an advantage being classified as a PRD-5, which they are not. I'd like to talk about the employee parking. Now, they are stating that there'll be 30 to 40 employees. I don't know how this calculation came up, but when you think of how many people work in a facility, you have food service, you have maintenance, you have activity, you have housekeeping, you have management, you have marketing people, you have a large number of people that are going to be working in this facility. And I believe at one time, we were told by Waters that many of them would maybe be coming in by bus. There is no bus service coming into this area. There is one in the morning and one in the evening. And we also understand that the Met Council will be doing some cutting on bus service. So most of those employees will all be probably driving in, and most likely one in a car. So we're talking about more parking being taken in this area. Visitors and guests, visitors and guests are going to arrive. I have been at many of the facilities when they have very, very large events, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Easter, special parties, special dinners, many facilities that I have visited personally. I've had, I was not able to get into the parking lot. I had to park on the city streets into getting in. And we're not just talking about a few people. A large number of family and guests do arrive at these areas and do come. Also, we understand that volunteers will be coming over from the church and will be doing volunteering. This has not been calculated. And also, on the guest events, it was only calculated as 10 to 20 people. On these large events, there's a lot more than 10 to 20 people. So parking, I believe, is a concern. Also, what about handicap parking? How many stalls would be used for handicap parking on the top? We will need to know this. And then also, many times, there are specialists coming in. Sometimes there's nursing, OT, physical therapy, so specialty type of services would also be coming in to the building. And so we believe that the loss of 39 parking stalls is going to recreate some pressure. And on the overflow, where is it going to go? Is it going to go into our neighborhood? Yes, it probably will. Now, what about the other issue of the church? No wonder if the church has a large wedding, funeral, special occasion, where will that overflow parking? I was recently at the church for a funeral. We parked outside of the, I was parking two blocks away, and that is even without the facility. So what are we talking about? We're talking about the special events along with the church's special events. So I do think we could have some real problems regarding our parking. So I guess I would just like you to think about and to review the number of spaces that will be allowed and that they will not be overflowing in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
We have an existing parking problem with park events. The city will be expanding the park activity, thus the parking requirement will be increased. Baseball, tennis, basketball, playground, the walking trails. People should be parking in the city lot on Colonial Way, and that will lessen the spaces available for the Waters. This is the parking area across from Colonial Church on Colonial Way. It was empty during a baseball game on 6/27/2011. If people attending the park activities parked in this lot, as the city said they were going to start requiring, there would be less parking available for Colonial Church and the Waters residents in this city lot on Colonial Way. The north side of Olinger Boulevard, across from Countryside Park, is assigned no parking, but people are illegally parking there. And in fact, they are parking in some residents' driveways. For example, Trevor Eisenman, 5704 Olinger Boulevard, visitors to the park are using driveway, neighborhood driveways as drop-off areas and turnaround areas. Residents on the north side of Olinger Boulevard get six to eight cars turning around in their driveway every day. Mr. Eisenman can attest to this. There are food wrappers, bottles, cans left in the residence yards. Within the last week, Jamie Jenkins, 5708 Olinger Boulevard, was trying to back up and almost got hit because her views were obstructed because of illegal parking on the north side of Olinger Boulevard. She called the police to report the problem. Here's just park, this is the parking on Olinger Boulevard from the baseball game on another day. It's June 12th in 2001 in the afternoon. Just to note that this is, it's like this every weekend and a lot of times during the Here we have, sorry, we have excessive parking on Hillside Drive due to the park activities. Here's another, it's Hillside Drive on another day, so they're parking there, too. No one is parking in that city lot on Colonial Way. So what happens to the parking for the Waters and Colonial Church parking requirements when residents are directed to start parking in the city lot that the Colonial Church uses and the Waters would expect to use as well? Do I have another minute? Okay. This is a change church zoning ordinance for parking. As was raised in June and July of 2010, the city of Edina is tolerating this zoning classification difference, PRD-5, convalescent nursing home, and PRSR, because they acknowledge that the zoning code is outdated. They should equally acknowledge that the parking requirements for churches, one parking stall for every three seats in the main sanctuary, is every bit as much out of date. That ordinance was created in an era when churches did not regularly sponsor large events and did not often hold concurring activities. These multiple events leave the parking inadequate at many of the church, cities churches. Major events such as funerals already use the soon-to-be-vacated South parking lot, both sides of Colonial Way and the streets such as Olinger Boulevard. The overflow can only get worse. We predict that the new ordinance will require more than the one to three ratio of parking stalls to sanctuary seats, perhaps maybe a one to two. And when this happens, when these events happen, they'll also pour into the parking on the nearby streets. So this is, this is the parking on the both sides of the streets on Colonial Way. This is the, we already have this existing problem with church events.
I have a question. What is the, there's a public lot for the park? Is that on the Waters property?
Can I answer that question?
Yes.
Somebody should.
Pardon.
When Colonial Church was put in, there was a parking lot east of Colonial Way, up against the woods on the west side of the Countryside Park. When the park is redesigned, the path coming straight from the park into that parking lot is a shared parking lot, as I recall. Colonial Way dedicated that space to city building, the facility, and they currently share it. At one time, I believe, they used it for a park and ride, although I'm not sure that's still the case. But when the park is redesigned, that lot really is not going to be significantly available to Colonial, except probably on Sunday morning.
Okay.
They have a, they have a park lot that is up from the church nearby.
Right, but those are park, park issues, they're not, they're not on the land that we're talking about where the Waters is going to be, is that correct?
Yes.
Would, somebody else, are you with the proponent, are you with the applicant? Okay, we'll have some questions for you, and then you can address some of these issues, okay? Yes, sir.
Is this thing on?
It is.
Yeah, okay. My name's Trevor Eisenman. I live at 5704 Olinger Boulevard. If you look out of my front window, I look directly across the, across the park, and I can see exactly where this unit's going to be built. It's straight across from me. And we've lived there for 22 years. We came here because Edina is a, it's a wonderful place to live. We have some great neighbors and great police force, low crime. There's only one fly in the ointment, as far as we're concerned, with our house. The parking and the traffic right now is horrendous, and it's got worse over the 20-some years that we've lived here. The reason being is that the police don't enforce the no parking on the north side of Olinger Boulevard. And I happen to be one of the people that the previous speaker was talking about, where we get a half a dozen cars every day turning around in my, in my driveway. And I've asked the police about it, and they say, well, it's private property, there's nothing we can do. They can't stop cars turning around in my driveway. And of course, I can't damage the cars because that would be my liability. But also, my wife has to give me hazardous pay for me to back out if I want to get out during the day because of the cars that are parked on my side of the street. The mailman is screwed up, the garbage pickup is screwed up, there are no parking signs there, and all these SCOTF laws, they just park there anyway. She alluded to Jamie Jensen, who pulled out the other day. She came, Jamie came crying in my house. She was backing out, and she's my next-door neighbor, and almost got hit. So I said, we'll call the cops. So the cops came over, and they did do some ticketing there. But by and large, all that's going to happen, I don't, I don't anticipate what's going to happen with the parking problems, PDR and all this stuff. All I know is that the parking right now is horrendous. It's, it's become more horrendous over the years, and it's going to be, and it's going to get more horrendous, obviously, with, with the project that's going in. And to say that the reduction of 36 units is insignificant, you're kidding yourselves. I mean, if you, if you're going to try and stuff 10 pounds of garbage into a five-pound bag every time, that's really what you're trying to do with this project, so. Any questions for me at all?
Thank you, Mr. Eisenman.
Okay.
Does somebody want to speak on something other than the parking? We recognize, and this is not the first meeting of the Plan and Commission where people in this neighborhood have complained about parking issues. And I understand that, that the streets are full and that people park in no parking zones, and I suggest that that's a matter that you really need to take up with the police. And it, from what I've seen on the ordinances that the city has, the Waters project, regular size or reduced size meets the requirements for parking. So, you know, I mean, I'm having trouble drawing the connection between what's happening in front of Mr. Eisenman's house with, with this project, but I'll save my comments for later. But we've heard a lot about parking. Does someone have comments other than parking to address, please?
I promise it's not parking.
Thank you.
My name is Dorothy Kersner. I live at 5828 Jeff Place in Edina, of course. And this is like a bad deja vu again from last year. But my concern is, listening to Mr. Johnson's presentation and to the commissioners, the affordable housing, the low-income units, and I just would not like to see the city of Edina get seduced into thinking they're providing low-income housing using the elderly waivers. And I hope, do the commissioners remember the discussion of elderly waivers for rent from last year? Okay, good. Because I contacted somebody who I do, I've been through this with my own parents here in Minnesota, so if I could just read you something, and then I'll just show you this list. And this is what, this person who I would be glad to give you a copy of this. And she writes to me from, from her office, unless it's a subsidized apartment building like Section 8 HUD, et cetera, where low-income residents' rent is limited to one-third of their income, here's how elderly waivers works in a nutshell. The resident has to qualify for medical assistance and has to be at risk of nursing home placement due to need for services. This is determined by assessment by the county. If the person lives in an assisted living building that accepts elderly waivers and there is an elderly waiver-designated unit available, the resident still has to have income sufficient to pay the rent portion of the monthly care course. For example, if someone moved into an assisted living building that costs $4,900, you know, $4,900 a month, the building would have to inform which portion of that is the rent and which is the care cost. The person has to have high enough income to pay the rent portion, and that's one of the reasons why elderly waivers is not the great solution we all used to think it was. And in speaking with Mr. Johnson about this and some other people in the city council, metropolitan council, the half of the median income for a senior citizen is $27,000. And our group met with Mr. Johnson a few weeks ago, and he said, well, say, an affordable unit at Waters would be $2,000. So if the income is $27,000, it costs $24,000 to live there, and that's by the services. That leaves $3,000 a year for people to live on. I just want to be realistic in what we're proposing and how many people would be able to live on $3,000 a year. I mean, picture your own parents. I know my parents couldn't do it. These are the covered services. Person has, the person has to be eligible for medical assistance and looking down here at rehabilitation. Rehabilitative therapy. There is no line for rent. So whenever you're looking at or hearing elderly waivers bandied about as the cure-all for affordable housing, it's not. So if anybody wants a copy of this, I'd provide it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's David Henry, 5712 Creek Valley Road. I would like to remind you that when we've all been through the details and a lot of the issues here, but I think when we step back and look generally at what are we doing, nobody in this room, it's my belief, no one in this room objects to the idea that we put single-family houses on this lot. Nobody objects in this room that we put duplexes on this lot. It's the density that we're talking about here. If I come in tomorrow and ask to do the same thing, I could put 11 units on my lot. I, I wouldn't even get into the back office of City Hall. I'd be booted out so fast. You would say, we have a general plan in Edina that the taxpayers spend a lot of money on, that staff spend a lot of time on, and that's all of a sudden been thrown out the, out the door. I, again, the density here is just an amazing change from what's in the neighborhood. The traffic study, I think even the applicant agrees that the traffic study shows 425 average daily trips. If If you're taking 28 feet out of the common area of the building, you don't know what's going on there. Is it 28 feet out of the trash room, meaning that the trash service now has to come more frequently? Is it 28 feet out of the storerooms, meaning that deliveries have to come more often? There's, I mean, there are some representations, but there's actually no conditions of approval that are being placed on the project. Finally, when you look at the 425 cars, and you look at the intersections that were studied in the traffic report, you'll note that Olinger and Colonial was one of the intersections. The other was Tracy and Olinger. And the third was Colonial and Tracy. Okay, so there's these three intersections in the immediate neighborhood of the project. That doesn't get 425 cars out of the neighborhood. They have to go through other intersections. They have to go through the intersections of westbound 62 and eastbound 62. They have to go through the traffic intersection that fails, and it's timing of the light, that's Tracy and Vernon, and they have to go through Olinger and Vernon. And nowhere in this project are there any mitigating efforts being made to change the timing or adjust the traffic. And I think you have to take a look at that traffic study and understand that it's a flawed study. I encourage you to not approve the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Harvey Haver. I live at 6108 Tracy Avenue. And I have some prepared statements, but I, what's going on here, I, my prepared speech is going to be, I'll talk about it a little later. I just have to tell you what my feeling is here. I feel like it's smoke and mirrors and a lot of double talk. And Bob, I think his name is, talked about it here, about the zoning and stuff like that. I got here one of the statements that came from your planning director. And if we're going to work with the city on this kind of thing, we can't have smoke and mirrors and double talk. We have to be able to know what the hell we're talking about. This is a statement from him. Listen to this. "The applicant requested a PRD-5 district which only allows rest home, convalescent homes, and nursing homes." Okay? They chose that zoning because it is the type of use that they are. They actually operate this way, you know, professional staff? They let people do this?
Mr. Haver, I was going to save this comment until later. Here's what the ordinance says, okay? PRD-5, rest homes, convalescent homes, and nursing homes. That's exactly what Mr. Teague said. If you look at Section 850.03, Rules of Construction Interpretation Severability and Definitions, the subdivision 3 definitions, the following words, terms, and phrases as used herein have the following meanings. Convalescent home, a building or group of buildings licensed by the Minnesota Department of Public Welfare for the care of children, the aged, or infirm.
Yep, I've got that here.
Now, what is different from what Waters has proposed that doesn't fit in that definition?
Okay, let me finish this a little bit. The last line in this...
Well, I don't want you to say that our staff is guilty of smoke and mirrors.
Well, it's confusing to the citizenry is what I'm saying. And that's what I'm trying to get at. You know, we need to clarify, because we need to communicate. If we can't communicate, and it says in the last line here, "The Waters will be licensed facility for the, quote, 'care of the aged.'" Now, is that someplace in your...
I just read, Mr. Haver, PSD, PRD-5, rest homes, convalescent homes, and nursing homes. Okay? That's what that portion of the ordinance says. The other portion of the ordinance defines a convalescent home as "a building or group of buildings licensed by the Minnesota Department of Public Welfare for the care of children, the aged, or infirm." So transferring the definition into what PRD-5 means, PRD-5 is for rest homes, a building or group of buildings licensed by the Minnesota Department of Public Welfare for the care of children, the aged, or infirm, and nursing homes.
Okay, well, how many kinds of licensing are there?
They've got to get the licenses from the Department of Public Welfare. They've got to go to the state to get the license for that.
Okay. So is that the licensing? Is that now affected by the moratorium?
I suppose there's lots of things affected by the moratorium. Mr. Jensen commented earlier that they apply for the license part of the way through the construction project. Our zoning is not dependent upon, our decision is not dependent upon what the state does. If the state does not license the facility, then Waters has spent a lot of money building a building that they can't use. So it's in their interests to make sure they obtain that license.
Well, what I was originally going to talk about was the state moratorium.
Could I speak with you for just a moment on this question?
And you are?
My name is Christine Henninger. I live at 5816 Jeff Place.
Okay, Ms. Henninger, I'd like to have Mr. Haver finish his comments. I've worked into his time limit here, so I'm going to give him a little bit more time, but...
I just want to try to clarify what we feel is an incredibly important point about this whole development, which is the PRD-5 and the license. The PRD-5 is for, as you say, rest homes, convalescent homes, or nursing homes licensed by the state of Minnesota. Right?
Right.
Next, there is a moratorium by the state of Minnesota on licensing for new rest homes, convalescent homes, and nursing homes.
I will have Mr. Jensen address that issue.
I would, we would all greatly appreciate that, because that is an incredibly important point that I don't, we don't feel has been acknowledged by the city staff or...
Well, it's not really an issue for the city staff. It's an issue for the Waters.
But if you're approving something under a PRD-5, it becomes an issue for our whole city, because they can't beat the requirements of PRD-5, because they can't get a license from the state of Minnesota, because there's a moratorium on licenses. So it's a circular argument, and it's not being addressed.
But it's like, it's like, it's like somebody wanting to build something in the watershed that's dependent upon getting approval from the watershed district. We can still approve the project, but if the watershed district does not approve it, it doesn't go through. We can approve this project. In fact, we already have approved this project.
Preliminary.
No, this project, if we vote no tonight, everybody should understand, if the Planning Commission votes no tonight on their application to reduce the size, then they proceed with what they already have. We're not changing the zoning tonight. We're not changing the plan. If we vote no on their request to reduce the size, they will proceed with the larger facility. That's the issue before us.
Understood, but my understanding is that they need to go to the city council as well.
They will have to go to the city council as well.
Correct? And we will continue these arguments.
But if the city, you made...
PRD-5 is not an appropriate zoning. It's not, it doesn't work. And...
It fits, it fits the definition in the ordinance.
But if you can't get a license, then it doesn't fit. And either Shelter needs to come up with a new plan, or the city needs to come up with a new ordinance that works.
We're still going in circles. This is what I started to say.
I will have Mr. Jensen address the moratorium issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't mean to sound argumentative, but the ordinance says what it is.
Let me just answer real quick.
All right, Mr. Jensen, please.
There is a moratorium and has been for a number of years on construction of new nursing homes without specific approval of Department of Health. We built a new nursing home 10 years ago in Eden Prairie, 26 beds, with specific approval of Department of Health. And the last year, in the last two months, we've gotten approval to open an assisted living in Minneapolis on 38th and 23rd Avenue South from the Department of Health with those two licenses I talked about. Last fall, we got approval to do the same thing in Little Falls. We're now getting approval within the next months to do the same thing in Princeton, Minnesota. We've done it dozens of times or more in the state of Minnesota. That's how you do it, and it is licensed by the Department of Health.
So what is the difference between what you're proposing and what is covered by the moratorium? That seems to be the question.
The moratorium, there's a specific licensing specifically for nursing homes
Okay.
that is different than what we're doing. We're licensing for the assisted living.
What is the difference between a nursing home and what you are doing?
Department of Health and Human Services licensed a variety of things, group homes, board and care, lodging, and nursing homes are separately defined as a different facility than assisted living. So the nursing homes have had a moratorium for a number of years, but for a specific approval from the state to expand like we did in Eden Prairie. The assisted livings are approved on a regular basis. There is no moratorium on assisted living, you know, but for the state budget process, which might be a whole different thing. But if we, I mean, if we hadn't just done it in the last 60 days in Minneapolis, you know, five miles from where we're standing, you know, it's the best evidence that we have, that we go and regularly get approval from the Department of Health for licensing assisted living.
And is that regulated by statute?
Let me look at the statute. The statute sets it out, but it's really more administrative, and you don't get specific approval for assisted living under Housing with Services.
Do you have a, do you have a statute that you can cite or a regulation that you can cite that would be available to people to take a look at?
Yes.
What is that number?
Let's see, the Minnesota statute 144D.
Oh, that's got to be, that doesn't sound...
I'm just going, I know, I'm just reading off the sheet that I have. I can forward the staff, the contact people from the Minnesota Department of Health. Maybe it's better for a third person who approves these regularly.
They're probably not there, but...
No, there are certain people from the Minnesota Department of Health who are still considered essential employees who are on staff.
Okay, so, but apparently it is under Minstat, Section 144. Okay, 144, capital D, and then there would be subdivisions under that.
Right.
Okay. Do you happen to have a regulation site?
Let's see, regulations, let's see. Minnesota rule, no, that's not the right one.
It would be a rule.
Yeah, it would be a rule. It's, there's a whole number of them that are involved. But I can get that stat.
Can you give us one that would give people a start?
Well, 9505.0290. 9505 is where a lot of them are.
Okay.
But that's more in government reimbursements and some technical parts of it.
Okay. All right.
But, I mean, the fact is, we are getting licenses, and we have done it, and we've done it more than once.
And you're drawing a distinction between an assisted-living facility and a nursing home?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would feel much more comfortable if a neutral party were to be explaining this to me than a proponent. It just seems, you know, like the defense attorney arguing the prosecutor's case. It's a little bit stilting.
Pardon me. You've got to watch out for those lawyers, I'll tell you that. Let me see, is there anybody else that would like to comment first? Okay, Mr. Johnson, come forward.
I don't have my copy of the Minnesota statutes with me tonight, but we're banding about phrases, license, registration. First of all, assisted living, in my opinion, gets a registration. It does not get a license in the same manner that a nursing home, convalescent home receives. And you made a reference to 850.03, which refers to a licensed facility. And if this is an assisted-living facility, it is not a convalescent nursing home, or whatever the third one is. And unless it fits one of those three, I don't think your 850.03 applies to this discussion, because we're not talking about putting a license on this facility. We're talking about having them register with the Department of Health, and there is a difference.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Can I just jump in here for a second? And maybe, Mr. Johnson, before you sit down, I'm curious about your view on this. The chair quoted the ordinance, and I was interested in the same thing, seeing the comments that I've received, and I've been jamming all of our email boxes for the last two days. He's correct that a PRD-5, the permitted uses are a convalescent home, a nursing home, or a rest home. And if you go to nursing home, or you go to rest home, in the definitions, they point you to convalescent home. And the ordinance defines a convalescent home to be "a building or group of buildings licensed by the Minnesota Department of Public Welfare for the care of children, the aged, or infirm." And that's where the chair stopped. But it goes on to say, "Or a place of rest and care for those suffering physical or mental disorders." So why is it that they have to have a license with that language?
With the PRD-5?
Yeah.
All three of those are state-licensed facilities. Unless they want to become a nursing home, it seems to me they don't fit PRD-5, and 850.03 is applicable only to licensed facilities, as I read it.
Well, I guess I disagree with you then, because it does define, we have in our ordinances a definition of convalescent home, and part of that does include licensed facilities. It goes on to say, "Or a place of rest and care for those suffering physical or mental disorders."
And the people in the 97 units of this facility aren't going to be looking for either one of those. They're going to be there for minimal services.
Okay, so your view is that the folks aren't getting, they don't have physical or mental disorders, and so they're not eligible for that unless they have a license?
I think you're broadening the ordinance further than it really goes, but...
I'm just reading it.
I understand that. I'm not here to debate with you. I'm trying to get this whole thing straightened out so that we know where the city is going in terms of assisted living. I just don't think this facility falls under either PRD-5, and I don't think it qualifies under 850.03. And I can have an opinion, you can have an opinion, and I'm not going to say that I'm the only one who can be right. I'm not going to say you're the only one who's going to be right either.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just pipe in a second.
Mr. Chairman, could I...
No. Mr. Johnson?
Short history lesson. The city has guided this. It has zoned it PRD-5, and it's already approved a general development plan when they found that this use is appropriate for this zoning. They've already approved the preliminary plat, which has now collapsed. But that general development plan, which is now in your revised ordinances, is called a site plan. They have found that this use can be done in this zoning district. Now, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, if they withdraw their amendment, that approved site plan stands unamended. So zoning, and whether it's an appropriate use, so far has already been decided by the city council.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson.
I understand all that, but I think the city was wrong before. I think the city's got an obligation to take a second look, and maybe it has to be corrected.
Well, I...
We can debate that forever.
We can debate that for a long time. If the city's wrong, then they'll have to change the ordinance, but with respect to this project, the issue on the zoning is closed. I mean, we're not going to change it. We can't change it. It's been granted.
Short of a lawsuit, you probably can't.
Well, and if somebody wants to file a lawsuit, you can always file a lawsuit, you know?
I understand. Anyhow, I started out to say that I don't think you can combine 850.03 to the Waters, because they're not a licensed facility.
850.03 is just the construction and definitions. Commissioner Fisher.
Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to, because you were up and addressing this issue, I wanted to ask you something, because I've been curious about this for a while. Were you, I think you were the chair of the Planning Commission when the city approved the Sunrise assisted living?
I don't remember what year that went in. I haven't been the chair of the Planning Commission since somewhere in... commission since somewhere in 2003.
Yeah, I know it was before I was here, and I took yours chair.
All I can recall, because I've tried to go back and look, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try and cover myself with Teflon or anything else. I just don't have a recollection when Sunrise and a couple of these were being presented, that anybody ever compared the PSR ordinance with the space of the various units. I just honestly don't recall.
Okay.
And they went sailing on through, and I think, looking back today, it probably shouldn't have. We can cure a lot of this by coming up with a special ordinance that covers assisted living.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I just, it's, it's always puzzled me that Sunrise is an assisted living on a former church property rezoned from single family. The only difference is that it's 10 times closer to the single-family neighborhood than this one, and I just don't see the difference. And I'm curious, mainly because of your role back then and your role here, what you see is the primary difference between those projects, and why this one is bad and that one was good?
Oh, I'm not going to sit here in 2011 and say that that one was good. I think we went on incomplete information. They came under a PSR zoning and didn't qualify for it, but got it anyway. What we're looking at today is debating the meaning of a license with a meaning of a registration, and trying to determine whether PRD-5 makes sense. I don't think the Waters qualifies under PSR-4 any more than these other organizations qualified. And I think what we have is a messed-up ordinance, and I think some type of facility perhaps belongs there, but I think we ought to try and design it correctly with the proper ordinance so we really know what rules apply, so that everybody, either on the commission, the council, or in the community, know what the ground rules are that we're going to work under.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to wait to see if there's somebody else that would like to talk. But I will get back to you. No, no, wait, there are a couple, no, there are, there are a couple people coming, so...
My name's John St. Pierre. I live at 6005 Arbor Lane. Last Friday, I had a cardiac procedure, and I'd request that Jeff here read my small statement after he's finished his part, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Duncan, 5820 Jeff Place. And I'm going to address some of the flooding issues in the floodplains of the area. Throw it in the middle there. The, the parking calculations do not include the loss of the parking built in the floodplains. Kenneth Horns, who's the civil engineer for the HGA, reported that if flooded, people will have to walk through 12 inches of water, impacting 15 or so parking spaces. This is without consideration to the increased wet period the area has been experiencing. The depth of water, the coverage, and the frequency are expected to be even greater. In a 100-year floodplain, there's a 1% chance of it occurring every year. Over the lifespan of a typical 30-year mortgage, we're looking at a 20%, 26% chance of a 100-year event happening. Ron Harnek, a licensed hydrologist, reported the following. "The watershed district floodplain rule of 2.0 does not specifically address the flooding of the parking areas or the risk to the residents and visitors of the senior living facility. However, the rule 2.3.2 states that the district shall issue a permit to alter surface flows only if it finds alteration will not have an adverse impact on any upstream or downstream landowner, and will not adversely affect flood risk, basin or channel stability, groundwater, hydrology, stream flow, and water quality, or aquatic or riparian habitat." I know it's a lot, but what, you can interpret this to say it will not adversely affect the flood risk, as providing discretion of the watershed district to consider the risks associated with the flooding of that parking area. And what is that risk? And that risk can be significant to the individuals of the senior facility for, with inadequate awareness, understanding, signing, and other precautions to keep people informed and notified when they could be putting their welfare at stake. That outdoor parking area could have as much as one foot of water during a 100-year flood event. From the plans, it appears that the access and egress from the garage parking, as well as approximately 15 or so outside parking areas, could have one-half to one foot of floodwater. In addition to the depth of the water, it would be concern, would be regarding the duration of the time that the parking area would be flooded. I did not see any hydrographs showing the duration of the inundation of, for parking area. Based on the events over the last 10 years, events greater than the 100-year flood will and do occur more frequently than have been assumed, and resulting in a greater risk. Without having proper warning and response plans and appropriate signing in place, residents and visitors to the facility would be at the risk of driving cars in a foot or more of floodwater, and potentially driving into deeper water closer to the pond. Of equal and greater concern would be the individuals walking in the water, potentially falling in the flooded parking area, and not being able to get back up. The issue would also seem to be an appropriate matter for the city to address as part of the responsibility for the public safety and the welfare as they review the flood risk associated with this project. The, it is not clear if a closed garage door would keep the water out of the garage, or exactly what the elevation of the garage floor is relative to the outdoor parking lot. If the garage door were open, would water rush into the underground parking area? Lots of questions on that, but it's clear the garage spaces would not be accessible if the outside is flooded. Should also be kept in mind that climatologists and hydrologists have determined that we are in a lingering wet cycle, and more frequent and higher-intensity storm events. And in fact, some parts of the state have been determined that it's appropriate to reassess the flood frequencies based on the recent wet years. Similar updating would seem appropriate in the metro area as well. The results would likely show that the actual risk for flooding is more frequent and greater, or in results in greater depth of flooding than currently envisioned. The intent here is to acknowledge that the risk of this event is not something that should be judged only on the context of 100 years as we know it today and ignored, but provide the necessary precautions to minimize risk to the public welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Thank you, Mr. St. Pierre.
Hi, my name's Julia Pell, and I live at 5820 Jeff Place. And I'm here to talk on safety concerns, representing, I guess, the mommies in the neighborhood. We just moved into the neighborhood in mid-March, and we bought this house because it is located two blocks from Countryside Elementary School, one block from Countryside Park, and a half block from Bretison Park. Jeff Place is a quiet street with very little traffic. We have two small children, eight and four years old, who ride their bikes up and down the streets like all the other children in the neighborhood do, as there are no sidewalks. The teenagers play street hockey. The kids run back and forth across the street to their friends' homes. It is a safe, old-fashioned neighborhood where we can raise our children the way we were raised. We are finally living our dream, the way of life we have envisioned for ourselves and our children. I'm very concerned about increased traffic and people parking up and down our residential streets. I'm very concerned about the safety of my children. I would not have purchased my house if I had been made aware of the significant impact the Waters senior project would have on our neighborhood, our lifestyle, and on my children's safety. With potential overflow parking on the side streets, it is hard for seniors or anyone to see kids. We moved here from Marietta, Georgia. While we were living there, on December 9th, 2009, a five-year-old kindergartner named Carla Campos, who attended my daughter's elementary school, stepped off of her school bus and was struck and killed by an 82-year-old woman who lost control of her vehicle. When she saw the school bus stop, she panicked and stepped on the accelerator instead of the brake pedal. Carla's uncle was quoted as saying, "We were planning a big Christmas party. Now we are planning a funeral." This horribly tragic event affected everyone in our school and community deeply. I worked for 11 years for a church, and I worked primarily with senior citizens. I love seniors. I have no problems with senior housing. I only want good things for senior citizens. But I have heard about and witnessed many driving accidents. Senior citizens drive. Mr. Jay would have you believe they don't drive that much. They drive. I've worked with them for 11 years. My parents are 82. They're still driving. Senior citizens drive. They're going to need a lot more parking than they've led you to believe they're going to need. And in reality, with all those cars parked up and down our streets, anyone, a distracted parent, a teenager driving too fast, could hit a child that is darting out between the cars. They wouldn't see them until it's too late. I am just asking you to keep our neighborhood streets safe for all our children. Please don't let what happened to Carla's family happen to us. We love our neighborhood. Please don't take away our dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Apple. Ms. Kersner.
...discussion, Dorothy Kersner, 5820 Jeff Place. Your response to Commissioner Staunton, you asked a question about the difference between the caring for the infirm children and the aged, and the differences in a licensed, before the state stopped licensing the facilities, is nursing home has to have a medical director, it has to have a director of nursing. There is a much smaller proportion of nurses to patients, or residents, whatever you want to call them, and everything is provided on-site. And the state made the moratorium because it's very expensive, and the profits, maybe Shell Corporation, they provide their own services. So residents are charged that fee for bathing and showering and physical therapy and occupational therapy, and those people come in. It is a business, and that's mostly the objection, is that it's a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. So I ask you to please don't approve the plat, the subdivision, and like Mr. Gordon Johnson said, we need to look at the ordinance or look at changing something. Memory care is so needed, and it is so needed in Edina, maybe we should be looking at the Rose Cottage model. There are lots of models. There are lots of duplex models that fit. It doesn't have to be a behemoth of an assisted living, which Edina is going to turn into senior upscale living. 55 years old, I could move into that building, and I have lots of driving and lots of years left. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Kersner, I just wanted to explain. My observation was that the definition of convalescent home in our ordinance appeared to also include a, the type of facility that was not licensed. That was the only point I was making, is that the language suggests that it does not have to be licensed in order to fit within the definition of a convalescent home.
But that is so out of tune with the times and the regulatory age in which we live of medical care, of care of children, of, I mean, what is to stop this building since it only has to be 80% age 55? Suppose we wanted to have an ASD program for school-age children attending District 287 because they need experience. What is to stop that? Who is going to control that? Is it going to be the residents? Is it going to be the city? Is it going to be the state? I don't think so. It just seems like we're opening up a can of worms, because it's not defined in the ordinance and the licensure for, as we define licensure today, it's not addressed in the ordinance. So I would respectfully ask you to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Kersner. Anyone else wish to speak? I don't want to hear any more about parking. We've heard enough about parking.
Unfortunately, yes. So, just a quick conclusion, so if you'll entertain me. And it really, really comes down to just what if there is not enough parking. And I'm going to put this in a past tense, because if everything gets approved, we can't go backwards. And how will the city handle this? There's no other land to build extra parking because of the district and the watershed. There's, the residential neighborhood has to be concerned about this. There's no parking ramp facilities that would be zoned for an R1 service, so we can't go that way. It's just going to push everything out further. The, there's going to be a significant impact upon the residents, not only from the parking, but also the traffic standpoints. Who's going to pay all the extra costs if something needs to be changed as far as the parks or significant changes in the neighborhood? And who's going to protect our property values if we have the cars going up and down the streets? We just say, vote no to the Waters change request, and vote no to the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Barbara Hogenson, 5829 Jeff Place. And this is just also in conclusion. We are given a legal notice from the, through the Minnesota statutes as far as weighing in on the subdivision. And so we come here, trying to do a good job of looking at the facts so that we're protecting our property rights. And, and it's a privilege to be given this notice to help us all come up with a better conclusion. And so the thing that we're trying to really stress here is that, put yourself in our place, all right? You get a notice to say, well, how do you weigh in on a subdivision? And so we come here, and we're sharing this, because what's really confusing is that the ordinances are not real clear. This is a planned senior residence, which it doesn't really qualify for, based on what Gordon Johnson had said. PRD-5 is opening, opening up a legal can of worms because there's no assurance that that's what's going to state a senior residence. So you're putting our neighborhood at risk as to use. And also, by having the use be, there's no really, no, no code for this assisted living, so your parking calculations don't take into account all the things that we shared with you. So there's been a real advantage to have the parking zone PRD-5, when in fact, it really has, it's something beyond that. And I, Carrie Teague had told us on the onset, we asked why this wasn't zoned PRD, PSR like every other assisted living, and he said it was due to parking. So if it were really a PSR, or if that's what it is, then that's what it should be. And see, that's what is really frustrating to us, because you're putting it into a PRD-5, and it's really not a PRD-5. And that's the part that, again, we are given legal notice from the statute, and we are so confused on how we're supposed to interpret this, when we can't look at the ordinances and clearly say what this is. And if you guys don't have assisted living code, then maybe you should stop and say, you know what, we need to get this in order first. It's not fair to the developers. It's not fair to the residents, and it's not fair to the staff, and it's just a circus. And, and I know everybody's working hard, and we really appreciate it, but again, we are the people that are given legal notice. We are to come here and tell you what we, how we weigh in. How can we possibly do this with codes and all this, this jerry-rigging of these codes? It just isn't fair. And so we ask you to really look at this, step back, and that's why we are here for this, with the subdivision, because why would we get the subdivision notice if we're not supposed to do anything about it? If it's just kind of grandfathered in, then why do you, why do you save your postage? Don't send it to us if we're not supposed to do anything with it. And so, and that's why, again, and the parking was already had an advantage with PRD-5, of which it is not. And so now, come back, get approved for it. We raised all these concerns about parking, and now want to take away the parking that we already showed you is an issue. And we just really hope that, we, we want to go on record that we want nothing to do with this. This is going to be totally your responsibility, because we're telling you all these things. And if there's accidents, if there's problems, then you guys are the ones that are going to have to live with this, because we are telling you, it's confusing, and we don't know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogenson. Thank you, Ms. Hogenson. Any other comments? Okay, I've written some questions down that came up during the discussion, and I'd like to ask, uh... While this would be, still be part of the public hearing. Yeah, yes. Questions for the developer, if you would. First question that came up is why, uh, it wasn't really a question, it was a comment, but why was the subdivision plat allowed to lapse?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we were trying to work on shrinking the building, and frankly, we just, we should have come back and just done the final plat and done the shrinking of the building. We thought this process would go a little quicker than it has, so it wouldn't have lapsed.
All right. How do you intend to limit, uh... The number of residents to 167? There was some, there was some testimony that, based on the number of bedrooms, and if people double up on the rooms and that type of thing, you'd have more than 167.
Well, I think from a practical standpoint, we will never have more than one person in a care suite or a memory support unit.
Yeah?
And then, Mr. Chairman, based on all of our experience, we don't ever have more than one person per bedroom. If it's a two-bedroom unit, you have two people. Very, very, I, I can't even think of a situation right now in any of our facilities where we have three people in one unit. We've had relatives where they have, you know, two units in one building, but the, the amount of doubling up that was suggested in those numbers, I've never encountered.
Okay, so that's based on your experience in doing this through that state?
Based on our experience.
Okay.
Do we have any rules about this, or any comments that are part of a tenant's agreement that is signed when someone comes into the unit?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, when they sign the lease, we look at the number of people. I mean, we can agree that we wouldn't have more than two people in a two-bedroom. I mean, we can just enter into that agreement with the city, because I don't think we're ever, it's ever going to happen. So it's, I'm comfortable doing that.
Commissioner Forrest?
I could see a married couple who had to live in caregiver too, though, because it is a residence, it's not just a nursing care facility. So I could see, I could see it realistically happening, or an adult child, or something, somebody else. So I don't think it would be inappropriate or necessarily...
Right, but the, the number of times that that occurs is very, very, very limited.
How ma, a question came up on the number of employees. Someone thought you might be undercounting your employees, is...
The, the maximum number of employees we'd have on one shift, because we operate 24 hours a day, is, is slightly less than 30. Right now, at the Colony of Eden Prairie, which is 142 units, their peak number of employees during the daytime is, I think, 28, 29. So 30 is about, about right for peak, and it goes down. We also adjusted our schedules earlier to avoid the traffic, so we're going to start earlier than rush hour and have the break of the shifts around 3:00, 3:30, so we avoid the rush hour times.
Okay. Question came up on how many handicap parking stalls, I suppose, is that regulated someplace?
It's regulated. And I think out front, there's two or three surface and two or three in the garage.
Can you address, and this is a question I have that came from some of the comments, what, what is your understanding of the difference between affordable housing, affordable housing units and low-income housing units? Because I think those are terms of art, and I think they do probably have different meanings. Could you elaborate on that?
Um, we want to talk about what, what's happening today at Eden Prairie, because that's 20% affordable right there. Most of the, the affordable residents at Eden Prairie right now have elderly waivers. And that's a combination of an amount for rent and amount for services. The amount for rent is about $860 a month, and then the service amount depends on what their need is. Average is, you know, $1,500 or more per month, depending on all the different services they need. There are also people who live there who are spending down some of their assets, whose income is below 50% of median income, and they have some assets for a home sale, or some, you know, a little IRA or, or a little pension. And you add those things together, and their income is still below the 50% area median, but they are not on the elderly waiver program, and they still get the affordable rent.
Apparently, this parking area has a tendency to flood during 100-year rains. What, what's your position, or are you addressing that issue at all with signage or whatever?
Yes, we'll have signage, and the other thing that we've talked to watershed staff about is, in the event of the 100-year flood, we will have all our staff park off-site at our Eden Prairie facility and bus people in.
Oh, what, what guarantees, or what, how do you, how do you guarantee to the city and the residents that in fact, you will continue to operate the facility in the way in which you intend to operate it now? In other words, I think the concern is, you build a building, you set it up as an assisted living place, and then 10 years down the road, you decide to stop that and you rent it out as condominiums or apartments, or, or gas stations, or whatever.
And our, Mr. Chair, other than, first is zoning, all the requirements that you and the city council put in front of us. And then I've always encouraged people, go look at the Colony of Eden Prairie, it's 10 years old. And, and don't believe anything that I say, just go look at some of our facilities and see how it operates and who lives there today.
Okay. We tried to answer, I tried to address the specific questions that were raised by the opponents here. Did I miss any?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm concerned that I personally had blocked, blocked some of the facilities out of any...
Special events at the facility?
Right, I'm hearing, yeah, special dinners, special happy breakfasts and so forth. I, I said it was a assisted living and over, so it's unbelievable.
Okay, what, what's your, what's your operation?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we and Colonial Church are partners. And if, if we have a, an event like that, we would obviously coordinate with the church so that we wouldn't overlap any event like that, so that we wouldn't both be having big events on the same evening.
Okay. I misunderstood your question earlier, and thanks for that.
My question, your assisted living could have a large open house.
Correct.
I'm sure you had marketing events, like you had the research and care. The parking is overwhelming, and the back of the church, they just, your building. I mean, why do 100 people come to this open house? Where do you want to park?
If we have an op, when we have our marketing open house, and when we have our open house, I already, when we met with the neighbors, I already said we're going to have one just for the neighbors and invite you over first. But when we have our open houses, we'll coordinate with Colonial Church. So during the day, or whenever we have large events, marketing or Christmas events, we'll coordinate with Colonial Church so that we don't have any spillover into the neighborhood.
So the church parking lot would be available, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does any judge have Christmas as any kind of work?
Let's not, let's...
Not necessarily.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, we coordinate.
No, don't, don't answer that. Let's keep this orderly, please, okay? Now, based on, other than the question about Christmas, which they do have, other than the responding or the new question about, anything that Mr. Jensen has responded, does that raise any new issues that the community would like to address? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hogenson, yes?
Our, our question, well, my question is around...
Name it, address, please.
Barbara Hogenson, 5829 Jeff Place.
Thank you.
Um, our, my question is around PRD-5 and for its use. And my question is, it's, it's good to say, this is what we plan on doing, but there's not a legal leg to stand on, because it is you, as you read, Mr. Staunton, is that this could be used for the care of the children, the age, it could be opened up to anything. So if there's no protection for our neighborhood, that this is going to be the use forever, okay? It, there's no guarantee. It's a registrate, a registered facility, it's not a licensed facility, there is a huge difference, but there is no protection. PRD-5 is very open-ended. And so that's what we are, you know, almost pleading with you to say, this is our, one of our biggest concerns, because there's no protection, other than people's well intentions. But legally, you can't enforce it, because they can come back and say, we have PRD-5, we can have a house for the, for children, we can have, you know, any other types of things that PRD-5 covers. That's what our big objection to is. It's not, I mean, it's very open-ended. That's why it would be better if it was a PSR, because then it is a planned senior residence. But PRD-5 is a, is a totally different deal. And so, and that's, again, that's one piece of it. And then, again, you're calculating parking on something that is all the advantages of something that it's not, because it's really not a convalescent home. And so that's where, again, we go back to, what if there are parking problems, then what are we going to do?
But it, under the, under the ordinance, it is a convalescent home.
Okay, well, you, all right, that's, but it's not, if you read it, it says it's licensed, but I understand where there's a difference of opinion. But regardless, it's also beyond a convalescent home. It could be for the care of children and...
That's what a convalescent home is, under the ordinance.
Okay, all right, but it's, this is supposed to be a senior place, right? We've been told it's a senior place, okay? It could be open to anything else, and that's the part that I think is really important to know, the distinction, there's not a legal leg to stand on if they choose to do it, something other than a planned senior residence. That's our concern.
Okay, I, I understand that, and so, yes. And Mr. Jensen did address that by saying that that's what they intend to do, so...
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing, I have a whole cast.
Our financing is through FHA, it's a 232 program, requires elderly housing. It's 40-year fixed-rate financing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jensen.
And you can't prepay it for 10 years.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Any other testimony to be given? All right, I will take a motion then to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed, we'll now bring the matter up to the commission for discussion. I have a question for the city attorney. We're asked to do two things tonight. One is approve the, essentially approve the reduction, and two, to reapprove the subdivision. And my question concerns the scope of authority and what we as a commission can do with respect to the subdivision request. What is our, um, what is our charge? What is our discretion in that? And does the proposal meet the definition, or meet the requirements in the code for
First of all, the city council's already approved the preliminary plat, so initially, the first time we go around, they did find it met all ordinance requirements. If you learn something new, that's fine, but reviewing and approving a preliminary and final plat is a quasi-judicial function. It is not a policymaking function. You're to determine whether they meet the objective requirements of the ordinance. Is the lot sized properly? Does it have the proper frontage? Does it have the proper width? And whatever, whatever else your subdivision requires of a subdivision.
And then I would ask staff, does, does this subdivision lot meet those ordinance requirements?
It does.
Thank you. Okay, other, Mr. Forrest?
I'm not against the project, really, as, in the reduction of the size of the project, and I really love the idea of neighborhoods being eclectic and having different types of, sometimes different types of even housing styles and certainly populations and integrating them together. I'm concerned, because we're dancing around definitions, I disagree that this falls under the definition of a nursing home. The state of Minnesota has a different definition. It's, and our local ordinance can fit in there, but, uh, well, anyway, it works one way, it doesn't work the other way. I mean, we, our, our ordinance is worded more loosely, partly because of probably when it was written, and some ambiguity in how do you define this thing? Because there are trends in care change over time. Assisted living wasn't even around 20 years ago. And now there's a moratorium on nursing homes, and that used to be the primary approach. I'm, I'm thinking, I, I do agree that, I don't think it fits PRD at all, because, for several reasons. First of all, the definition, uh, nursing care, it's a, or a nursing home is under specific licenses, under the state of Minnesota, and different regulations in assisted living, which is considered a residential situation with services provided on-site. It's their home, they direct things versus the other way around, and different rules and regulations. There was some contract act, I don't know when it was, that I think when the state specifically tried to keep assisted living facilities as unregulated as possible in order for people to have more direction over their homes. And again, the parking calculation, I think they made a very good point when I was looking at this, that it's based on what we consider traditional nursing home for, you know, one parking space for every four people, and that is, you know, maybe visitors on a weekday, you know? Is that potential? Do I think we necessarily need a ton more parking spaces? This might be more than we need, I don't know. But I don't think the calculation is necessarily an accurate one to apply or to use that type of formula. The other thing is that when I was digging around in this today, I was looking at, because I just don't like the ambiguity. It's really starting to get annoying. And 85003, under our rules of construction interpretation, severability and definitions, section two closes with the, the sentence, "Any use not specifically allowed by this section, and have the words of a definition or a rule of interpretation..." So any, any use, or no, I'm sorry, the section referring to 850 in general. "Any use not specifically allowed by this section in a district as a principal accessory or conditional use shall not be allowed or permitted in that district by implication, interpretation, or other construction of, or meaning given to the wording of the section." In other words, we shouldn't be playing around with things, we should be explicit. And I, quite frankly, I, it's, it's already zoned PRD-5. I mean, that's a done deal. However, they are coming before us for plat, preliminary plat approval. That's a fresh deal. And it, it gives us the opportunity perhaps to look at that. I don't, I don't think that necessarily applies to look at use, but I think it's something, we're stuck in the middle right now. I don't think we really fit very well on these things. At this point, it's zoned PRD-5, it's not zoned P, um, it's not zoned R1 anymore. Maybe I, I don't know how we can get out of it, but maybe we just start looking at a PUD, or we can put the, you know, the restraints that follow with the property over time. But that's a messy proposal as well. So it'll be interesting to see how people go forward with it, because I don't think it really fits. I think it's really gotten messy. I think there's been some grandfathering in of application of some of the zoning from previous projects that may or may not have been done accurately. And, you know, maybe I'm getting a little head up about this, but other people were too, so I'm, I'm just going to take my liberty and do that. So I, I really think we need to look at this with some, some eyes, as far as, why do we have a different definition of the state of Minnesota when we're relying on the fact that it's a licensed, it's licensed by the state of Minnesota, it's a certain type of facility?
Is there a motion? Well, yeah, I guess we can, we can, the discussion we're having really applies to both. One, should we, should the application to diminish the size of the project be approved? And secondly, do we approve the subdivision? Those can be taken in either order. I think we do need two, two action items on each. The one... The one, I think we need two action items for both of those issues. Commissioner Fisher?
I'm just going to make a comment, and then I will make a motion.
Okay.
You know, last time around, there were a lot of people here making a lot of comments in the public hearing, and we read hundreds of emails both times. Couple things that I remember very distinctly, as I was facilitating the meeting last, or the meetings last time around, that people said the building was too big and the units were too expensive, amongst many other comments. I know, just in following the news and watching what's happening at the City Council, the citizenry was very adamant that the developer not be given a break on park dedication, which obviously would have helped the affordability of units. That's $695,000. The citizenry was not supportive of tax increment finance, which would have been, gone a long ways towards making units affordable. Neither one of those happened. So tonight, they're here trying to make the building smaller and some units affordable. Two things that I heard people saying was a weakness before, not having that. So that's sort of, as I approached this, and I think that's the question here, all this, a lot of this other discussion really is not what we're here to vote on tonight. Though I will say, you know, I understand people don't like this project in this location in your neighborhood. I get that, and I think you've brought up some interesting points tonight that I didn't hear before, and that's, that's okay. One of, just a couple comments I would make, there's a lot of discussion about this 100-year flood and the impact on the parking. And I appreciate those comments. I don't remember hearing a lot of those the last time around, so it was a little bit new or different information. But I would point out that as a user of that park, I am one of the baseball parents, and I'm just going to say for the record right now that I actually park in that lot back behind, and I'm always the only one. And that became a problem the night that my battery went dead. It took two days for them to find me. But the reality about that park is that if there's even a little half-inch rain, which is a far cry from a 100-year flood, the park is drenched, the baseball fields are unusable. And so it's one thing to point out the water problem and how it impacts parking, but it impacts all of the uses around it. And a lot of the discussions we've had about parking, we're forgetting the fact that the whole idea here is utilizing other parking and not doing it all at one time. Many of the examples that were given were problems with the use of the park and the parking around the park today. And to be fair, if it's that big of an issue, I'm pretty confident that the senior citizens, that many of them that are going to live in this building are not going to be using that park on a regular basis. There's $695,000 that's been dedicated. I would make a pitch to the park department to build more parking in the park. If that's the problem, do that. And essentially, we have to separate where the real issues are. And I don't believe the location of this building and the parking, supposed potential parking issues for this building are going to, they're not the same issue. And I don't think that it will be a problem in any way. So with that, I am going to make a motion to recommend that the City Council approve the site plan, are we doing the site plan amendment?
Yes.
Site plan amendment to reduce the size of the approved 139-unit convalescent home by 28 feet to provide seven units of affordable housing with all of the findings and conditions from the staff.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there further discussion on that motion?
Chair.
I'm sorry.
I know there was some, there was some discussion, among other things, obviously, regarding, you know, the potential for parking overflow. And we did hear some comments by the proponent along the lines of being, or expressing a willingness to reach agreements with the city or to reach agreements with the church on how they might handle parking. I'm not proposing anything along those lines right now, but I'm going to suggest that perhaps, perhaps the proponent and the City Council give some consideration to that. If these things were placed on the table, there seems to be some willingness to do it. If there are concerns in those areas where there might be a risk of impact of overflow parking or access to overflow parking, that might be worth considering and worth getting a, you know, imposing as a condition or securing as an agreement so that we can at least address some of those things that are, have been expressed by the community as matters of importance to them, over which there appears to be the potential for some general agreement.
Thank you. Other comments or discussions? Commissioner Forrest?
Hey, Mr. or Commissioner?
Commissioner.
Thank you. I just want to know who I'm supposed to answer to. I'd like to concur with Commissioner Carpenter on that, and also, kind of in the spirit of cooperation, this is editorializing again somewhat, but it would be nice to see the police department, the parks department, the park board, maybe the traffic people, work together with the residents in addressing some of this and perhaps doing some information campaigning through the baseball clubs as far as carpool, don't park on the north side of the street, they'll be ticketing, things like that. And, you know, maybe come up with some ways of dealing with the traffic. I mean, the neighborhood already has a problem with parking because of the park, and that's not, has nothing to do with the waters and, and, and I don't even think it has that much more potential impact. Traffic might be something else, but I don't know if the parking is really that their issue. But I would love to see some cooperation among these different groups. I don't know, maybe citizens can work in that.
This is not the first time that we have heard of parking issues in the neighborhood. I agree that, you know, the police and the City Council need to work a little bit better to resolve some of those issues. Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the site plan amendment to reduce the size of the approved 139-unit convalescent home by 28 feet to provide seven units of affordable housing, and your motion and second is subject to the findings and the conditions set forth in the staff report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Okay, the second issue is the preliminary and final plat of the subdivision lot. Is there a motion on that?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary and final plat to create a new lot for the approved 139-unit convalescent home. Approval will be subject to the finding that the proposed plat meets all zoning and subdivision ordinance requirements, and to the condition that the final plat must be filed with one year of the City Council's approval, and a park dedication fee of $695,000 shall be paid prior to the release of the MyLars approving the final plat.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a discussion of the motion? Commissioner Forrest?
Hi there. Yeah, I guess, I would like to point out that because this is a preliminary plat approval, we are back to that point in our evaluation of this. And I think that, I think it was Mr. Gravell brought up a good point about our ordinance in section 810, that those are the factors that we should be considering as well with a preliminary, with a plat approval or subdivision. And that includes compatibility with the neighborhood and a number of other items on there. So I just want to distinguish the plat approval from the other motion that we've had before us in that way.
Okay, but you understand the motion is for preliminary and final plat approval?
That's fine.
Okay.
But it starts with...
Okay. Other discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion to approve the preliminary and final plat approval is approved. I want to thank the residents who came. I know that this decision is not, at least for most of the people in the room tonight, is not what you wished, but nevertheless, we do appreciate the opportunity to hear those objections and to debate them, and I apologize if I sounded in the least bit contentious during the debate. I did not mean to be, but it is kind of an interesting issue when you, when you take a look at the ordinances. So if, if my remarks were over the top in any way, I do apologize to the participants tonight, because that was not my intent. I thank the proponent for his presentation, and again, thank you for all your participation this evening. Reports and recommendations, are there any? Next item, correspondence and petitions you received, was there a council connection in the packet? Chair and commission member comments? Any comments by any of the members of the commission? At the last meeting, we did mention that we will be undertaking or rejuvenating or restarting the zoning ordinance update in the fall when everybody's back. It might be appropriate to take a look at the issue of what is an assisted living facility, and do we need specific ordinance language concerning that? And this might be an opportunity to, you know, one of the things we can take a look at on the ordinance, so... Other chair or commission member comments? Any comments from the staff? Thank you, Mr. Knutson, for being with us this evening. I will accept a motion to adjourn, but I'm not sure who I should look to to have the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? We are adjourned.